Last thing I got.
Yeah, I said power.
Oh, yeah.
Until.
How was she there?
Had a gender. I didn't get the gender.
Probably somebody else.
Anybody else get it?
Yeah.
I think my email doesn't like you.
Could be one of the transformers failed.
But I got the batteries yesterday.
Really bad static.
That's interesting.
PA, thank you. Thank you.
Well, I can understand.
Yeah, I know.
You have the results for this district that you have.
I'll second it.
Okay. Yep, sent me an email too, but I don't think I'm down on here. It's an email, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can say that.
When did you send the email?
It will eat up.
Yeah? I don't remember when that was.
Was that last week?
Also, I thought it was the end of the year.
No. Hey, I have, I have spread this.
Yep.
I had to be in three minutes at seven. I'd like probably a Rundle plan to order. We're at Miller Delve School, October 25th. Let's start with a roll call. Martin.
Martin Kay.
John DeKendron.
Tom McGinn.
Tom McCon.
Grant Copeland.
Roger Moore.
Rich Canoff.
Tabby McWhiter.
And we're just planning what secretary.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a notion and we leave adjourned between eight thirty and nine o'clock tonight, please. A motion?
That's a motion.
Yeah.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
Mr. Chair. I had a motion before the board to leave between eight thirty and nine o'clock tonight or see.
The jury.
The jury.
Mr. Chair.
And I have a second. Any discussion?
Yeah. We're here to do business of the city. If somebody needs to leave early, then I think they should be able to leave early. But the rest of us should just stay here and do the business of the city, of the town. This would be the third time in four meetings that we adjourned early and I don't think that's fair to be under.
When did we adjourn early?
We adjourned early the night of the sidewalk and then the following night when we met in the fire station.
When did we meet in the fire station?
Two meetings ago. You weren't there.
No, because I said I wasn't going to be there.
Yes, but this is a question of adjourned early tonight.
Okay, any further discussion by the board members?
Yeah.
If, if, go ahead.
Yeah, we may have left early, what seemed like early, but it was still one past nine. Normal, it's starting to get more like ten thirty for us and I think rather than longer meetings, more efficient meetings, it's probably a better way to go, rather than just sit here. Because I'm afraid we're going to lose our wind as we go another. We've been doing it for several months now and we still have six months to go.
Rich?
I was going to comment similar. It seems kind of hard. When we met at the fire station years ago, we were meeting there until ten thirty or eleven or eleven thirty at night and it created issues because we kept going on and on. We need to, we need to have some kind of a timeframe in which we establish and we say, this is the time that we're going to meet, when we start and when we stop, so that we don't constantly have to be looking at it, at making motions to adjourn at any particular time. And I know I'm guilty of it. I brought it up a couple of times because there are things that I might want to be able to do, like see my wife before she goes to work.
Okay. I have a motion to adjourn between nine, nine thirty.
What?
Eight thirty and nine.
Eight thirty and nine, right? Eight thirty and nine? I have a second, any other discussion? All in favor of that motion? Four, one, two, three, four, five. All opposed? To oppose? Pass. That said, to, well, I guess your comment doesn't matter because we'll leave. Tonight, we're going to look at the minutes of October 4th, October 11th. Move into some of our land use ordinance revision stuff. We have a proposal before us for farm retail operations. Two, we're going to look site plan, conditional use, approval procedures. This isn't new to the board. Matter of fact, it's been outstanding probably for almost a year. Ted has some verbiage for us. Item three, we'll get back to the downtown business districts. Looking at some of the design standards as well as some of the sign standards in that new district and other proposed uses for the downtown district too. We'll have a planner's report, open it up for public comment and then adjourn. End. Oh, I thought you were, your motion. But sometime, I'd like to just make note, and you're a critical resource, I think, to the board. And while a lot of times you tend to want to stay back, if you have any comments, please make them at any time. The board would welcome them. I will open it up to the public from time to time as we're kind of moves through this process. Giving the board their opportunity to discuss. We're here from the public and then hopefully come to some conclusions at the end. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes of October 4th?
Let's move to accept the minutes from October 4th. Second.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 4th as written. Second, any further discussion by the board? There any nodding? All in favor? And there are two extensions where you weren't present.
I was.
Okay.
I wasn't.
October 11th, same? Which is last week's minutes, or week? Well, two weeks ago, yeah, break that. Does everybody had a chance to review those? I haven't. But I just need. I have not. I have not been to review. If anyone's here, so we wouldn't have a majority to vote one way or the other for the October 11th minutes. We can carry that over to the next meeting. I'd like to move into our land use ordinance revision workshop. Item one, some time ago, we received a letter that had gone to Ted and I asked Ted to kind of recap for the board gist of the letter, the gist of the request.
The request, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The request is pertaining to something that has been a bit of a quandary for the board in the past and a concern for the board. And that is the issue of how do we deal with agricultural products produced in the town of a level? Kind of encourage it, certainly, and how do we support it? Still, at the same time, ensuring that our residential neighborhoods retain their character and livability as residential neighborhoods. The board has struggled with this, how to balance those two issues of allowing farm stand retail in such a way that it would be profitable and help support existing agricultural or animal husbandry operations here in this town. And we've, we've made some strides. We've created a new, as you recall, last June, we created a new, a whole new land use category called farm retail, in which as specified in the 2007 comp plan, determined that, that we needed another type of retail to support farms that were growing in the town of Arundel that could get them through not only their seasonal crops, but keep them sustainable farms and provide them with cash flow throughout the year. One of the things that we looked at seriously was what we call farm retail. Farm retail is in fact permitting operations, places that are operating as, as farms, growing produce, growing livestock, to actually not only sell their products on a wider and a longer scale timeframe than currently allowed by our farm stands, but also to allow them to put in permanent structures. To provide, permanent structures, provide some more of the infrastructure necessary to preserve and display goods, especially perishables. It's very difficult in a 200 square foot farm stand to be able to provide freeze, freeze products or finished goods that are produced on that farm. Or limitations on parking or limitations on setbacks in farm stands are very restrictive. So you came up with farm retail, which essentially allows an existing operation to put a, set up a retail store in a permanent building and produce and showcase their products and sell those products as a retail operation. Secondary to the primary use of selling product, selling whether it be tomatoes, whether it be jams, whatever. You also said that the purveyor could in fact also sell products that weren't necessarily produced on the farm, that were produced by others, that were in keeping with that kind of operation that they're running. It could be pies made down the road or pies made somewhere in Maine. But that operation sold products that weren't produced on that site had to be secondary to the production of the products that they do sell on that site. We've already had one, one individual, as you remember, Finkel Pot Farm, which has built their community, supported agriculture around that. They will be coming in to expand that, to morph their project, their current project of community level, sustainable agriculture, to morph that into a year-round operation. And they'll be coming before us on that. They're excited about that. But when we were talking to various people, we found that we had a couple of loopholes because we were a little, or I shouldn't say loopholes, we had a couple of stone walls. People are producing products, but they often it's bulk products or it's a, it's a, it's a product that is a raw material that is finished, that is furnished to a manufacturer. And then it goes into a large basically bin of product. And if they were to sell that product, they couldn't assure us or assure the planning board that that, that what they're selling is exactly what they grew on the farm. And one of the situations that we ran into, Pamela Drew, who is, lives down on Limerick Road and has a llama farm, or I should say, it's not just a llama farm, it's also.
You can call it a llama farm.
Well, we can call it a llama farm? Okay. You also have.
Llamas go with one out. Llamas go with one out is the genus. And alpacas are a species in there. So you can call it one.
Oh, so we can call it one and incorporate it though? Thank you. She's representative of what many people have for animal husbandry in this, in this town. Basically, they're selling product, they're, they're raising, raising these, they're raising for wool or fur commercial on live animals and they want to sell the products that come from them. However, our strict, in strict interpretation of our, our current definition of farm retail would prohibit them from, from selling that product or selling, let's say, alpaca socks. Because Pam can't, sure, it's that the alpaca and that wool that you're, that you're, that she's selling is a finished product, actually came from her alpacas.
The point being though, it's an any kind of good.
It's a kind of good. It's a kind of good that they're, so what we need to do is look at, A, loosening up that definition and permitting, permitting those uses to occur that are supportive of that kind of industry. I mean, really, seriously, if we think about it, there are other, other operations in the town that produce wool. I don't know if the, if the alpaca.
I call it fiber, but you can call it wool.
Okay. Well, we also have sheep, we also have fiber, and we have a variety of other different farms that would like to partake of this, but they can't meet this strict criteria of what they're selling comes from that farm. So, well, the question before the board is, A, loosening up the definition so that we can support this kind of agriculture, let them sell the kind of products that they are growing for. It's just a guarantee that that's a finished product that came from their farm. The second problem we have is that although what Rundle is, is, as we all know, still has large tracts of agricultural land, our zone, our zoning that we did in 2005, we have zones that run through sections of our agricultural lands that we've designated as growth zones and therefore they have, they have, they're very dense settlements in that part of the space in bulk.
An acre.
Or two acres of land. Right now, we're limiting farm retails to the R3 and R4 districts, which are three acre.
They're not in R3?
Yes. And they're definitely not in R1. And I've got two, I've got two oper, we have two operations and I could think of three operations that are existing that are in the R1 district. And so the question is, how do we get over this problem? Do we, the first question is, do we get over this problem? Number two, if we do, if we consider these kinds of operations to be valuable and to, should be supported, how do we, how do we make changes in the ordinance that would enable them to have farm retail and at the same time do it in a way that doesn't denigrate the quality of the residential neighborhood? We do have some denser residential areas, not exactly where, where Pamela's places, but nearby. And we can expect, and we have seen several developers have approaches about there was some intense cluster development in that area. So the question is, do we set up some standards? Number one, do we, do we allow farm retail in the R1 zone? Number two, if so, what are the standards we should establish that ensure that such an operation is going to interfere with the kind of residential development we're trying to attract in that zone? Remember, R1 is a dense, is the growth zone. That is the dense zone that you have designated to be the area you want to funnel all the new development in before you funnel less develop, less dense development in other sections of the town. So how do we, how do we work together? How do we work, can we work these two things and come up with compromise so that both, both parties win? And so how? So that's one of the questions.
First, first question is, does that not still fall under home occupation? Home occupation is allowed in all zones.
Correct. There are some limitations to home occupation. The first problem with home occupation is very severely restricts retail use. And farm retail is exactly that, retail use.
Why?
Limits it in terms of parking, limits it in terms of employees, and it limits it in terms of vehicles.
Why does home occupation restrict retail? What are you supposed to do with it if you have it's home occupation? You still can turn it, still make jewelry or anything else and sell it. That's still home occupation. That's, in comparison to other towns, home occupation is allowed that way.
Well, in this town, it isn't. Your current home occupation ordinance restricts the amount of retail sales you can do on the site. That's one of the problems.
But they don't put dollars amount? Because it turned out prior to that, we had other ones who turned out, we're doing retail and when they outgrew their space, that's when they moved.
Well, that was the theory, but the problem is that, and especially in Pamela's situation, she's limited because of the amount of space that she can use. And the first part, first problem is, you're limited to 25% of the building area of your existing house or 500 square feet, whichever is greater, or actually, I'm sure it was less.
That's within the home occupation.
That's within the home. It's got to be within the home. And the problem with home retail, first of all, I mean, with retail, farm retail, the first real big problem with that is that that usually involves areas much bigger than the 25% or 500 square feet.
Garage.
Think of that. You know? Well, some of them are bigger than the garage. And, well, let's look at, let's look, Murray, just to address that. Let's look at home occupation. You go to your ordinances and you go to page, let's see, 98, which is section 86 of your ordinance. Page 98. Hey, kids, just see in this. First, the opening statement in that talks about how building tradesmen and those kind of operations where you're doing all the business outside of the home are exempt from being classified as home occupations. The second part is that the home occupation is carried on only by the residents of the dwelling unit. It may not include more than two non-resident employees. A home occupation may not alter the residential character of the structure, neighborhood, or change the character of the lot in which the principal use is as a residence. The, here's the real kicker. The home occupation shall be carried out wholly within the principal or accessible accessory structures. Space used in the occupation is no more than 25% of the full area of the residence or 1,000 square feet, whichever is smaller. Sorry about the 500, it's 1,000 square feet, whichever is smaller. In your case, you have how many square feet for your house?
My house, house is about 13 hundred square feet.
So.
Where's the garage?
The garage is 24 by 30. I'm using basically the 10.
Put a new garage. On the difference.
Something funny.
The difficulty though is, this isn't a home occupation. And trying to, well, you're, we're trying to shoehorn something that, that wasn't the intent of the home occupation. The agricultural business that is going on is not a home occupation.
I was just.
Yeah.
Sea glass, sea glass turned out started as a, and then they.
I'm still not sure that it doesn't qualify as a farm. It says that, the definition says a permanent structure to use the store, display itself, agricultural and animal husbandry products produced on the site and other lands farmed by the principal owner. So she's producing the fiber from the animals and she's selling it in the store. It doesn't say it has to be only produced on her property. No, it doesn't say only, and the ambiguity has to go to the, to the person. There's an ambiguity.
And again, that's, that gets back to the end.
Then it says that other things that produced by non-owners should be permitted as second.
But this is your primary. The first problem is it's your primary. Second of all, it's very ambiguous, you're right. But the simple fact is, she cannot with a straight face tell you that the product that she's going to sell, you're going to buy it from the wholesaler, right?
It doesn't say that it has to be primarily from her.
Some of it.
It says raised on the site.
It says produced on site, so I think that, that implies that it's a product that she raises.
She has to sell stuff that's produced on there, but it doesn't say that it has to be primarily.
But she can't be selling stuff that's produced on there if she sends it someplace else, has it converted out and then it comes back in.
So the same.
Are you selling it?
It is, it is, but I think that that's the problem with the way the ordinance is.
And that's my concern. We need if, depending on how the board feels.
I didn't get my lay devil's advocate.
Yeah, that's, no, I agree with you. I, I agree with what you're kind of saying, the ambiguity, kind of why I brought up early on, the, this is an any kind of good service, never the intention to kind of exclude it. There's a little, there's a little wording there. There's a limitation on the side of the building, I believe also, which is 1,000 square feet.
2,500 square, 25%.
No, no, that's under home occupation for, for farm retail. I think you go up to 1,000. You don't think so?
I don't think so.
What page are you waiting for, sir? Nah, I don't remember. I always talk. And it's 200 square feet.
That's for a farm stand.
No, that's farm stand.
Yep.
There is. Farm retail.
There is no limitation. There isn't anyway. There's no limitation.
So no limitation.
JJ.
Okay, so there is no, so there is no limitation. So.
I'm not sure making a point too.
Yeah.
I don't think any of us opposes this, we just have, at least I don't. But it makes me, I, I think we have to be careful because this is one specific type of use. But what about Christmas tree in wreaths? With, like wreaths, for instance? What if, how do we know they're, they're produced on site with, with the branches that were cut on that property? You know?
Tom, that's specifically spelled out in there that it can be secondary.
It can be secondary.
Yes.
Because it's seasonal.
Because it's seasonal?
Yes.
And it's secondary use, not a primary use.
So, but wouldn't, wouldn't that apply to this as secondary use? It's, it's part of, of the end product is to put it together to, to produce it. Otherwise, you, you won't probably sell too much raw wool on a farm stand. So we have to do something with it. Yes. So it, it's something that is secondary to the raw towards the finished product. The raising of the animals, you come under the animal husbandry code also with limitations on.
I came before you back then, I think it was 2002. Because having the animals for commercial use is conditional where I am. So I'm limited to five animal units, which is 5,000 pounds of live animal weight. So, the, the ordinance allows me to have the animals, but it constrains me in selling what they produce.
Yeah.
More importantly, Mr. Chairman, right, I hate to pull the Trump card out, but according to it, shit's not permitted in that district, period.
Oh, yeah, no, that's the.
Farm retail is just not permitted in that district. End of story.
Well, again, kind of going through each of the issues, I had that, probably the biggest one for consideration of this, there'd have to be some sort of size, something.
There's also vehicle, there's also trip generation, which is 40, 40 vehicle trips per day. And it's not 40 in and outs, that's 40 trips per day, which means 40 ingress and egress. That means 20 real trips per day. So if you're doing retail operation, that's a real limitation, not much traffic. That's where your real limitation in running a retail operation really comes from. If you start, if you start doing tours or any of the things you were talking about, having llama day and so forth, she's going to be well outside of what the limitations are for, for home occupation. So it's trip generation, size, and location that are all the limitations for. And frankly speaking, if, if, I don't like using words, but using individual names, but we have a berry farm right down the street and that's constrained in the very same way. If they want to stand, if they want to do anything more, they, they couldn't do it. Also have, although I've been told the sheep farmer is not really a commercial sheep farm, but if somebody wanted to do any other kind of products along through there, we have a number of farms on that road. They'd be constrained to farm stands only. So.
I like to focus on, on those issues, but not the number four special issue, my point. Rather than just say engage in wool here, but I think engaged in any type. Could be a dairy farm that doesn't make their own butter, but they sell, they sell the butter that might go out to a processor. I'm afraid of just making, just applying to wool because we'll have, the next, the next owners will come in with their own distinct type of.
So you're saying this is too narrowly defined?
Yeah, that's where it is. I like to make it wider, more open.
What do you, what do you do with the dairy farmer who slaughters his cows and decides to sell it? He wants to have a farm stand and sell them. You would end up with the same situation. You wouldn't be able to do it.
And I say, why not?
I mean, true. Except, except for the zoning issue.
Right.
As long as it's setback from parking and all that, as long as it's low key enough. I think the whole notion of a farm stand is, it's rural and it's low key. We don't want to have a 7-Eleven type of guy.
Well, I would submit to you, you could have 7-Eleven.
So we have to be careful not to.
Yes, it could. Because, I mean, you know, the reason why it's narrowly defined right now, and I would agree that you might want to explore widening it. I mean, if somebody has a, one cattle, which they send out, oh, gosh, let's say, they have one cattle, raise it, one big cattle, send it out, slaughter, but then they put a meat market there. And they sell pine line farms meat there. They sell one cattle pine line farms and then they run a total meat market. And then they say, okay, I also have vegetables that I do here. And some of those, I send off, you know, a couple bushels off to the Del Monte. Now I've got, now I can sell cans of Del Monte vegetables on.
Couldn't the same thing apply to this? She could be selling L.L. Bean sweaters. She could be selling, uh, yellow bean sweaters, thousands of them into this sort of...
Away from the employee's school.
What's that, wait?
They don't franchise, in other words.
Well, some, some producer, she could be selling unlimited amounts, so we have to be careful how much of that, that accessory is, is part of the story.
Is it likely that would happen? Probably very unlikely.
Well, now you're just arguing against yourself.
I know I am. That's cause they haven't jumped in yet, John.
Well, you can restrict it by the size of the, it says here, it's part of the store. You can restrict the size of that.
We have to, we have to get rid of restrictions.
I'll, I'll get that, not just jump in. I don't have any problem if we say in the R two district, that farm retail is acceptable. I'm not sure about the R one, I would have to be persuaded on that one, but the R two, I don't have any problem. I do have a problem with the chart that we've been providing with government. We're gonna allow this in the R three with a, with a three acre minimum, and a fifty foot setback, and a twenty-five foot property setback, and we're gonna make it more restrictive in the R one and R two. You have to have five acres in the R one or R two zone. I think those numbers are reversed.
I think, well, I think the, I think the reason, the reason for I, when I first reviewed that too, but we're talking an area that's designated residential right now. This is not a residential use, but people buying their properties, buying their homes at a certain expectation, and they do so in an area. So having more of a setback, having, making sure that there is plenty of acreage for the, the animal units, or five animal units, that is not going to be intrusive in that residential. I, I think our comp plan, and I have to go back to it, agricultural and trying to maintain that condition through how a Rondo was in there at one time, I'm not, I'm not sure that, when we broke it down to all of these individual things, it shows up.
The question I wanna ask though is, why is an area that has so many farms zoned residential? Why isn't it more of a farm residential area to begin with?
Does the comprehensive plan? Well, there was a lot of input from this citizen that went into that, and what the zoning was, and what went before the town spoke, and what was voted on, so it's there kind of because of some of the work of, some of the folks on this board, of the comprehensive plan committee, we had a strategic planning committee at that time, we also had, um, lots and lots and lots of things that were kinda given to us by a then planner, and the best way to designate, and there's state law that requires certain areas, not certain specific areas, but you do designate, and then you follow through, um, those designations, so they have to kinda go somewhere, where, what is your growth zone, what is your business zone, so...
I, I agree with you on the R one district, in, in terms of it being the nature of, of an R one district. R two, I, I would have no problem, but I, I still think that if we're going to tell the R three and the R four, if we're telling the R three that it's three acres, and all you have to have is three acres of land that you can have this farm stand, I think we should have the same standard in the R two.
I, why, and just to, to build off your point, why would we want to have a larger minimum lot size and a larger setback in R one and R two, just because it's farm retail? What's, what, what is disagreeable about farm retail in R one? Is it the farm part?
No.
Or is it the retail part?
It's the retail part, for me.
Look at other retail that we allow there, you don't need five acres.
And I, for, for me, the retail part in the R one, regardless of whether it's a farm or any other kind of retail, in the R one, to me, that's objectionable.
Cause that comes back under the comprehensive plan, they don't want any businesses.
We have no, we...
It was a designated residential area, comparable to that.
Yes, if I can, Mr. Chairman. One of the things you did that we, the sound plan that was required for you to do under the state of main comprehensive planning law, and it is good planning, is you designated those areas in town where you wanna concentrate growth and development, the business and residential, um, and where you want to restrict or discourage development. That is requirement you have to do as, as part of your compliance with the comp plan. The areas that you want to channel development in are going to be called growth areas, and the ones that you don't are obviously called non-growth areas. Now, in growth areas, because you wanna channel development in there, it's gonna be, assuming that the land can take it, you have a carrying capacity, you're gonna have smaller lot sizes, because you're trying to increase the density of development in that area. And that's why you have the R one district has the smallest, or has the least amount of minimum lot size of any of the zones in the, in the town, any of the residential zones in the town. Similarly, the business district that you designated, that was in the CCS district, the H C, and the C N, C C N district, as well as the V I, were very small lot, if you recall, they're all one acre minimum lots, even though some of them are on the land that you really need like ten acres or five acres to be able to, to put on a well-inseptic, simply because of the inhospitable, inhospit, uh, the insu, uninsu...
Unsuitability.
Wow. Skip dinner, see what happens?
Unsuitability of the land.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm working on it. So, uh, basically, in the situation, we have an R one district going down Limerick Road in that whole area, because A, the land's pretty good, B, we've got a, a, basically a town artery going through there, C, you designated that because of the land, because the suitability of the land, proximity to fire suppression, proximity to water and other services, this is where you wanna concentrate development. That happens to be the R one district, and a lot of it, in fact, most of it is on, on Limerick Road. So that's why Limerick Road is zoned as it is. Minimum lot size, you know, it has a small minimum lot size. Why do we have three acres in the R, R four district? Because that's the minimum lot size.
Lot size in here.
Now, that's, that's just put in there, and frankly speaking, don't really look at that chart, you know, when it comes to R three and, you know, R four and R three, because quite frankly, you know, that's not really important. These are, these are topics of discussion. I think what we really need to do is, A, decide whether or not we want these in a denser neighborhood like the R one district, and then what's the minimum lot size we should have? I will tell you this, anybody who does any farming knows there is a minimum lot size that you have to have to do certain kinds of productive farming. I mean, you couldn't do a decent llama production on a half acre lot. Exactly. Same thing with producing, if we had Noah Wetworth in here, he would tell you, he can't have a sustainable agricultural operation on even a five acre lot. So, five acres is, is pretty much the absolute minimum that you would need, um, for whether it be animal husbandry, or even if it be crop production, or even cattle.
All right, I got one, third question. There's other agriculture.
Yes, I know, but I'm just saying in general, that's, there's also the other consideration, and this is, this is for you gentlemen to consider. The other consideration would be, since you are in a dense lawn area, in a dense development area, also you probably want to encourage that there be a little bit of elbow room around this particular facility, uh, when it's butting up against more dense residential neighborhoods than like Toubet Woods, for instance. So, um, five acres seem to me is, it's negotiable, and obviously right now, it's, it's arbitrary and capricious, uh, because you, we could make it three acres, we could make it, I don't think I'd wanna go less than three acres, because again, you gotta have a certain amount of land to be able to have a sustainable operation. But the objective was, A, have enough land to be able to do your operations without impacting your neighbors, and B, provide enough elbow room so that you aren't crowding your neighbors to do this operation.
Is, is, are you referring to the elbow room because of the agricultural nature?
Yeah, I, I, it's only because of the retail operation.
The retail portion of it.
Right, because you're gonna have, retail operations be no different than running a retail operation, assuming it's successful, and that's our hope, is that these operations will be highly successful. Uh, I think we've used Gillespie's or Maxwell's as examples, or as our models, which they're, they've been very, very busy, and that's a lot of trip generation, that's a lot of traffic coming in and out. We truly hope they would be that successful. But that trip generation is gonna have certain impact on the neighbors, and so the question is, you know, how much is too much? How many of these things in a row would be too much and would change the character of that, of the, of the area? And this is what we have to ground.
That's fair.
Five acres is, yes, it may be arbitrary at this particular, this particular point, but it's some sort of control to ensure that we don't have it wall to wall, and we might have some separation between residences and these types of uses, and at least some distance so that they're not overwhelmed by trip generation.
Okay, question for you too, also, state standards to qualify as a farm, okay? They have certain size, do they not? Yes, why I'm saying that is, if, for example, you want farm plates or anything else, there is a minimum size for qualification of owning property along that way. Am I right, Ian? I know that...
I'm not certain that there's a requirement for like a minimum number of acreage for the farm. I know that there are limitations on issuing a farm plate for a vehicle, it has to be used for certain purposes, that be it. So I would know in terms of the size of the farm, that there's a limit to that.
I understand there is, okay? And then also, and I'm not trying to come on the inspection side of it, okay? But the other thing is, there are different degrees of the farm, okay, under plate, because usually, you have a radius of twenty-five miles to use a farm plate, but there is also two at the same time. Other standards are reduced, but there is also, uh, under the licenses, and then like I said, I'm not trying to go into it, you can travel across country on farm plate, cause you do, cause there's different qualifications for standards.
I don't know if it applies to this issue.
I'm just saying using quote, the idea of acreage as farm, that's where I'm just going at. Well, we're using it not as farm, but for, for a use for farm retail.
This is true, how much money do you have?
Ten acres.
She falls, no problem.
Yeah, that's another point, we're not doing one particular instance.
I'm just saying qualification as a standard for, if you can own so much land, and for to qualify as a farm, that's why I was using it to turn on.
But can I make a point? And I, I understand the, the five acre lot size because of the impact. If I was living next door and all, in a residential area, all of a sudden there was that traffic, it, it would affect the value of, of the property. I would like to have as less, as little impact as possible on, on the buddy properties, whether it's traffic or, or whatever.
Or parking.
Are you in R two or R one?
R one.
Well, but you're gonna have traffic no matter what, even the lot size, that is your traffic, if it's your traffic, it's, it's just, you're talking about the parking.
Well, maybe we'll have to focus on that.
But your traffic is gonna be there regardless.
If you ever need, they will come.
But it's how close it is to other...
Well, I, one, one issue with that, I, one, one of these I have issues with is the setback in residential structure and adjacent properties. I think that sixty feet is, is a little long. Okay, I, I'd rather have it be closer to the road than, than, than closer to the buddy. I, I think it should be maybe sixty feet from the property line rather than the property structure.
Well, if we were to do it from the, from the property line, then we don't need to have a minimum lot size, because quite frankly, if you're sixty feet from the property line, you have fifty foot building, we have a big chunk away. You know, sixty foot, sixty foot setbacks, we're, we're already over two hundred feet right there, and that's not even considering maneuvering room around. That would be if the, if the, that was exactly in the middle, which it's never gonna be. So we're talking about large, larger pieces of property than a, a one acre zone.
That might just the same, same result, yeah.
Do, I, I'm, I'm just looking at, at the ordinance, and if I read this ordinance correctly, I don't have to live on the property, I can have a farm, and I don't have to live there, and I could put a retail operation on it.
Yeah, you're right.
I just wanted to make sure I understood.
I wasn't agreeing.
I think, I'm not, I'm not sure I agree with that. We're talking, because we're talking about...
Not sure that was the original, but...
We're talking about an R one, R two zone. I think if we're going to allow farm retail, we have to, we have to mandate the same way we're talking about the D B one, to have a, to have the, an owner occupied piece of property, that to have a farm retail that has to be owner occupied.
Farm retail is supposed to be sec, a secondary use, isn't it?
No.
No, it doesn't have to be, not based on this.
The, the implication is that you are doing operations on there, I mean, that is the implication, um, but it's not necessary, because you can in fact, and, and this is where, um, it does have a loophole, I mean, that you can sell products that you grow at another location, that you own in concert, so you could own, and, and this is the case with many, many farm stands or farm, uh, retail, you're selling corn, that you're selling your cornfields, which are in Buxton.
Like Pat and Barry's farm.
Definitely, same fact, yeah, exactly, exactly. So you're producing, this is your retail location, you know, technically you're doing some production there or on another production of other lands you own, but it does provide the, the small, it, you will have a situation where you could have somebody who would do just like with the berry farm. This is their primary retail location. But then you will have people like, like Pam, who, who have a home occupation for all intents and purposes, a small farm in which they're trying to sell product out of, and make, make a living. And that's where, that's why we started farm retail, um, because farm stands weren't doing the job, and there were other opportunities that were arising, there's more and more of local agriculture that provides people with a venue to be able to, to get some money on a year-round basis that they can't right now. Well, actually, they can right now, but, but retail. So I guess the big question is, and we've already established farm retail as, as a user we want to encourage, I, the first question would be, do we wanna extend that to, to, uh, animal products? Whether it be fiber, or whether that be meat, um, or dairy? And then the second thing would be, uh, how, how should we, do we wanna allow it in the R one district? Is it compatible with the R one district? The third, third thing we have to determine is then what are the specific limitations of it operating in the R one district? It's a real concern here with the R one district.
The, I put that to the content, because it's always, always, always coming out, and that is, even before we get into the zone, one of the, I wanna say mandates of the citizens of the Rondo is that we attempt to try to maintain that role character of the town of the Rondo, that's why people have moved there, that is, so I think you're absolutely right, the infringement of agriculture is kind of, um, should be going throughout all this stuff. And does that extend to, R one, I think is, you've got plenty of land that is not intrusive, or there's an adequate setback, I think I'd like, I like that in most cases.
Yeah.
That way it's not a matter of the haves and have nots, everybody has to do the same certain things.
I can understand that the R one zone is a zone that we more, um, have developed, but right now, I mean, it does have a very rural face to it, and I think that we have to still allow those people that have farms in the area to be able to do things that farms would do in any other portion of the, the town. I don't see a problem with a minimum lot size and the setbacks the way he's got them written here. I understand the need for it, and a more, in a more compact area, which we want the R one to be, it's not a compact area right now, it's very wide open down that stretch. It hasn't developed yet.
And this is an established ongoing business that we'd like to grow a little bit, do a little more.
You know, it's, it's the same problem in a residential zone that we're facing in the, in the D B one, is we're basically boxing out people, we're making them non-conforming uses where they've been for, for years, and...
And I think we have to look at some way to be accommodating to it. I don't think making a lot size five acres minimum compared to the R3 and R4. The R3 and R4 shouldn't even be in the table because it's an allowed use.
Still conditionized, but yes.
Right. But I, I, I really do think that we have to, you know, work hard to, to allow this to be. We do have to be careful about how we do it so that we can attract residents. Because I'm sure that, you know, nobody really is gonna wanna live too close to a farm with a bunch of buffalo on it. But, you know, as mentioned earlier, I, I really do, I think we gotta work towards.
I, I'd like to look at it with a slightly different perspective, specifically for R1. Cause what we're in effect saying here is, we don't want any retail in R1 except for this. And what is this? How is this retail different from any other retail? You know, do you want retail in R1 or don't you want retail in R1? If we do, and if we only want a special kind of retail, can we really define this? And do we really want that? Or do we want no retail? And the only way I can think of defining this, because what do you think about it? Farm retail, I mean, even the way we're writing it here, any food product, any food product would qualify.
Well, basically-
Any natural fiber product would qualify.
But there has to be a chain to having been grown, raised on the property.
That's very, that's very foggy here.
Well, that's what needs to be cut down, I would guess. Yeah, I would, I think so, I think-
Don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm very supportive of it. But I'm just looking at it, I'm being devil's advocate here because if we're saying we want this retail, but only a very special kind of retail, we better be able to define that very special kind of retail. Or just say, okay, retail is fine. Because why not, like this five acres for instance, why couldn't you have a regular annual retail on a five acre lot in R1? And that would be a simple solution to say, yeah, retail's okay as long as you have a big enough lot.
I think the difference is, is that somebody like Ms. Drew is, is raising the llamas, is producing the fiber from the llamas. And I just don't think that anybody is producing their, you know, gasoline on their property. So why any kind of retail?
Well, it's gotta tie in with the-
We can take this particular definition and I can start selling paper products. I can sell, I can have a paper store because I'm growing wood. You see what I'm saying?
I thought it was tied into what they're actually producing.
I'm producing wood, so why can't I sell paper?
Are you a tree farmer?
Yes.
Then, I wouldn't see a problem with that.
Yeah, I wouldn't either.
I believe it was staple.
Staple sells paper.
Yeah.
Well, you send it out for pulp and then it comes back as papers. When would your, your-
And it doesn't necessarily have to be your pulp.
Okay, we've had about 50 minutes. Would you guys like to comment? I'll put-
Well, I, I'd like to clarify about the, the sending the fiber out and then what comes back. With a small farm like I have, I have 21 animals. I produce around 100 pounds of fiber a year, which is not very much at all in the whole scheme of, of, of commercial, you know, business. It's expensive to send a small amount like that to a farm, to have it made into yarn or socks. Actually, it's almost impossible to have made into socks, but it's just not enough. No, no, no processing mill is gonna even touch it. So in fiber, it's very common to work together, all farms work together and you join co-ops. I belong to two co-ops and a fiber pool. So you contribute your fiber, as do many, many other farms, until they've got, you know, thousand pound bales of it that they can send out to a mill. Then the product comes back, socks, gloves, whatever it may be, and we all share the product. I have enough call to sell more really than I can produce. I've been doing the socko market, winter market, did that last winter. And, and I did a really good business. So someone like me who wants to retail, I will get back more product than I sent in for fiber. And that's great for the farmers who don't wanna retail. And cause they're all across the country and many of them don't wanna retail. They wanna take care of their animals and that's it. Don't, don't give them a store. Um, so I'm selling their product for them. That works great for me. My fiber's in there somewhere. I can't tell you where. But somebody's gotta sell it. But that also helps me drive my cost down because like I said, a little amount, 100 pounds, very expensive to process. Because we got together and we, we had thousand pound bales, we got a much better price on our processing. So it's really the only way for a fiber farmer to drive costs down is to get together and do volume. I've tried, I've had this challenge with summer farmers markets. Hennibuck is one that I did for a few years because they're also looking for you to sell what you have directly from your farm. And that's fine with vegetables. You can pull them out of the ground, set them up on the table, and the consumer knows what to do with them. Potatoes, tomatoes, whatever it is. When I take a bag of fiber after shearing day and I set it on the table, there's a limited number of people who are gonna buy that. There's gotta be a hand spinner. I'm not a hand spinner. So I really have to send it out, have something made, you know, that everybody wears, socks, sweaters, whatever.
Are all of the people in this cooperative name?
No.
No.
No, these are, these, they're, these are national. If, if, if we took all the main alpaca farmers, and there are quite a few, I don't think it would even, it would still not be enough. You need thousands of pounds to get a commercial. I mean, we don't have a commercial textile business in the United States anymore. It's gone. You know, it's all, it's all offshore. So the alpaca farmers are, are struggling with that. I just wanted to clarify how that works. It's, it's the only way to drive my cost down. Otherwise, it's really a cottage industry of taking that raw fiber, hand spinning it, hand weaving it, hand knitting it, and, and selling, you know, what, what you can produce, what I can produce, what one person can produce. I can sell more than that simply because the area that we're in, we have people in the summer here.
They have a need.
Yeah. They, they've come to me, they wanna take something home from me. They wanna come see the, the animals are a big draw. I can do retail somewhere else, which, which I am doing by going to that socko winter market. But the, I can't take the animals with me. I take the animals to one place. They go to Law Home Farm in September. There's one event they have for the animals and we take a couple. But other than that, they don't travel. So the animals are a draw for people to come and see them. And like I mentioned when I first came in, they really don't like to be touched and handled. But that's okay. They don't mind being set a carrot when they see hoards of people in the driveway. They'll come right over and, and decide they're gonna be friends with them. So it's, it's just, it's different than other farming. It's different than vegetable farming. It's different than crops. The product, there has to be a long process to get the product in condition for the, the consumer. It's just not like vegetables. So I'd be interested in somewhat of a little agritourism thing if I was able to do it. At the moment, I work full time off the farm and I have about another year to do that and then I'm gonna be home. I can't really go that route unless I can do something a little more than just a little shop in the dining room. I can continue as a home occupation and I could just have a little low level retirement and, and do that and maintain the animals that I have. I, if I could do something else, there's a possibility that I would go that route.
Question to ask you. Will you, did you belong to a lot of the cooperatives, okay? Do the other cooperatives or whatever you wanna call them, do they also have nationwide or anything else show or have, uh, people come in to see their animals? I'm, I'm using that, what I'm feeding at is, is a guideline of the cooperative, what they may do in relating back to the uses of the cooperative for possibly farm retail. You see where I'm, I'm going at that?
Well, the, the co-op is an organization-
Oh, the co-op.
The co-op is an organization that handles the fiber.
But-
And, and the farms are all members of the co-op.
But do they have something, what most of the co-ops have or do, do they also, by choice, I understand that, do they have it so that turn out they may show their animals or, or let people come in and see them?
You mean some of the other farms that are members?
Yes, are members of the co-op. I mean-
I, I imagine there's a whole range of what other farms do. Because, see, here I am in a, in a residential area, yet many members, I'm sure, are in all kinds of different areas.
Settings.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, there are some in, in Idaho, there's, I mean, they're huge, you know, big, big farms with hundreds of alpacas.
Well, I'm just thinking of, with the co-op, co-op, that's the idea turn out, where are you getting your excess product from relating to the co-op? Okay, let's, let's do, okay, it's a great, no, 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 it's a great, it's a great discussion and however, I'm not sure how- I think you're tagging it with the co-op as a guideline for- The reason- If, if they're, if they're worship guideline, Dr. I'm gonna go to Dana, I'll open it up to the board.
Okay. You know, I think Paul mentioned a couple of things, you know, about the comprehensive plan. I, I think this is a, this is a great use and this is something that we should, from all can try to get done, you know, one way or another. And when we look at the, at the comprehensive plan, there are some issues there, you know, that says agricultural, too bad. We could somehow expand the agricultural definition to figure that in. But remember what we did with-
And clutter.
Right? We figured out a way to make it work. That was no businesses, no nothing, and we figured out a way to make it work. Maybe we can try to come up with some sort of definition that fits into that. And I like Tom's idea of, you know, that's an area where something, if somebody had a small lot, you know, you could really bother your neighbor. But if you, if you set it up with some buffers, then, then something like this, which is, I think we really want, but we keep it a little bit further away from a neighbor who may not like it, may not like the traffic. So, you know, I think the board really should try to come up with some sort of definition. Cause in essence, you know, black and white, it really violates the comp plan. But we gotta figure out a way to get around that.
How far in the proposed new ordinance, it's how far up does the new R1 come up?
Uh, right now, we have no, no, we have not changed any of the boundaries of the residential district. Barely gotten it.
The business district is what I meant. We were proposing to expand that Limerick Road.
Uh, yes, we, it's not as far as, as Ms. Drew's farm.
Is that far removed?
Yeah.
Yeah, very far removed. Just one quick thing, I don't have the definition that you guys have proposed, or maybe there's something in farm retail that you can work that definition to try to make it work.
Yeah, see, that's cool. Yeah, that, I mean, that's kind of how I thought this to break.
I have a question and then a comment. If you were to have a facility for retail sales, how big would that facility be?
My garage is 24 by 30. It would make a very nice shop.
700 square feet roughly.
It would be even fabulous to have a little more space, open space for, um, what are commonly called, you know, open spinning nights where anybody who hand spins can just drop in and have the camaraderie and the, and the, you know, and an evening of that. Have some space for people to do that. Even giving lessons of weaving or something like that, but if not, you know, it wouldn't be a shop, it would be some other open space.
The reason I was asking is that we, if we allow it in the, in the R2 zone, we may wanna put a restriction on the size of the retail space and say, you're restricted to 1,000 square feet. What in Tom's idea of setbacks, but then just say, this is the building size because of where it's going. It is a residential neighborhood and we should restrict the size of the building itself. And I think that would answer a lot of the other issues about what do we do with the dairy farmer who wants to have a butcher shop?
But then we get back to, to John's argument, retail is retail. So what's to stop me from saying, hey, you guys are allowing 1,000 square feet to dairy for chicken poops over there and selling eggs? Why can't I have a little store that sells eggs and cheese and butter? I'll keep it under 1,000 square feet.
Because you're not, you're not, you're not raising that crop.
Yeah, but you made an exception for that retail establishment. You made one. I'm in favor of it, but we're making an exception.
Well, I think, I think it gets back to, you really, the definition and the intent of what was written for farm retail. I'm not sure that I totally understood at the end and saying that we, we're against the comp plan, because the comp plan does say that we will encourage agriculture throughout agricultural uses, correct? It just didn't say retail.
Certain districts.
Agricultural use, is that what you-
Yeah.
Right. Agricultural and other natural resources use will be allowed in these areas. That's R1 and R2. And the businesses, it says, uh, limited non-residential uses.
So it gets us back to the definition of retail to stay consistent with the comp plan, making sure that we tie it to things that are, are grown on a property, raised on a property, end up with, I mean, I, I think I agree. But before we go down there, is, can I just get a sense from everybody? Do you feel that this sort of thing is, I mean, there's a lot of work here that we can go through, but do we have a sense that we want to strike down this path to allow it in throughout? Except try to tie it up?
Yes.
Let me just go back a little bit, but it, it goes back to, you know, once you have restrictions in place, you get yourself all tangled up. And one of the things we're trying to do is produce economic activity in town. This is one way to produce it, and it's even a way that is supported by the comprehensive plan. So absolutely, I think we should allow it. And I don't, you know, I, I just have to think that there has to be a way to define this, but the way it's done right now-
I agree.
It's not good.
I'm, you were too good at being a devil's advocate before. But I do think that it, cause I agree with you, right? And you guys, how do you guys feel?
I'm in favor of that.
Okay, so in general, the, the board feels that agricultural use is appropriate, this sort of thing would be appropriate, this sort of thing by the comp plan is encouraged. We do feel that either lot size and or setback and or a combination of the two should be required. This would be applied to all of the residential areas, 1, 2, 3, and 4, already allowed in R3 and R4 anyway. And, and again, I think we have a lot of, lot of established businesses, farms, whatever, just like we did when we went through the BI, those businesses that were in existence. And to me, I think there's gotta be some consideration to people in their livelihood and when they bought their places, what their aspirations were as well. So, Ken.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think I understand what direction you, the board wants to go in. I'll move that way. I'm actually gonna try to explore a little something else before next week, because we have a meeting next Thursday. And that is maybe we should need to look at a totally different definition for this kind of activity. And definition, I believe, is- And a definition, I believe, that Drew brought up, and it's gonna be used on a regular basis, and that's agritourism. And we need to create a whole different animal here. Get away from the retail that makes John understandably nervous. And there's a lot more, he's brought some, that's some points. And there are points that I'm concerned about too. As Drew mentioned, something I've heard a number of people say, wanting to have classes, of wanting to have demonstrations, of wanting to promote the concept of new sustainable agricultural methods. And as we know, this is beginning a, this is a new tour, emerging tourism market. So I think I'd better do a little bit of homework and think in different terms than we're thinking right now. Something a little more inclusive.
Don't we already have that?
Agritourism?
Not agritourism, but an agricultural educational facility.
We have demonstrations, so the problem is that is a very large, first of all, you have to have a certain amount of acreage.
Oh, it could be, it could be scaled out, but we pretty much defined what that should be. We didn't scale down the size.
And that was a requirement, I think it should be an option in an agricultural tourism thing. I don't think it should be something, you shall have classes every Thursday night. I think that's something we want to avoid.
Just a, just a quick note, when you look at the R1 versus R2, the R1 doesn't allow business, but the R2 says limited. Yet when you go down the table, they're exactly the same thing, except for nursing homes. It's like...
Okay, so I think in general, the board's in agreement that we want to move forward. To the town planner, I think Dan's quick is a little aggressive on your part.
Probably considering what I'm saying, I'm actually surprised.
Let's really look at this, I encourage, I encourage all of the board members, there are several things that have been brought up. If you have a major concern on definition, maybe we can, because I have several notes that I'm gonna be forwarding, I think Ted as well, let's make sure that this stuff doesn't, so that we'll be able to move forward. With this long conversation, I didn't think this was important so far. This is one of many, many, many items that we have, but we'll move forward. Did you want to make any comments at all?
Not to move this issue on retail on Route 1.
Okay.
We're coming to that.
Okay, sounds good. All right, let's, with that said, we'll refer that Ted to the next right, in either the next meeting or the next planning session, okay? Site plan, conditional use approval procedures. Again, many of us attended a MMA workshop down at the mill. When we left there, we had a lot of negative things to say about a lot of the things the lawyers wanted us to put in place, like when you come to a meeting and being excused and all of that kind of stuff. But I do think one thing that everybody in attendance that might have agreed on was that we probably really should review each of our standards when we're doing a final approval individually, because you can have a difference from that emotional state, saying, oh, this is overall a really, really good project, and yay, yay, I want this to happen, versus do they need the 30-foot setback? So then we're all kind of held to, how are we looking at the regulation? How are we interpreting MMA and the guide that they gave us? I think it's on page 39? I don't know if you actually read all of that, lots of it. Yeah, 39, bottom of the page. Address each review standard. It is important for the board to address each standard of review in reaching its decision in case the decision is appealed and the Board of Appeals or Court disagrees with some of our conclusions. However, if you vote on every single item, and you have the majority on an item, there's not much that they can, they have enough. So with that, Ted, I believe you had some verbiage?
No, I didn't, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I thought you were...
No, I did not have your verbiage. The reason why I don't have verbiage is because I went over this in mail, and I went over it in how we could codify this. And at this particular time, I don't believe, and I would not recommend that we make this a regulatory procedure. I would say that this would be an administrative procedure that this board does. It is a tactic, or it is a procedure that you adopt when you do make motions, rather than putting it in Section 98. I'd say you absolutely have to do it, you have to follow this procedure. I'm really, I'm really adverse to doing that. Because if we were, for some reason, the smallest, smallest little project, if we were not to follow that procedure, then we would, we would be liable for not following our procedures and that application would in fact could be challenged.
I think, again, the difficulty only comes up in the appeal process. And as I said at the very beginning, I think this is simply an administrative move in the presentation, and that write-up that Ted would present to the board, and it'd therefore be a result, you know, instead of reading it all down, we just simply, on anything, on anything, my point is, it's not the simple ones that are gonna be the problem, it's some of these bigger, more complex issues and projects that come in. Our seasonal potting, there's a whole brand-new kind of development. Weir's Motors with Drexon coming in from out of state and the rest of it, and not meeting some of our requirement. I think on an individual review, I'm not sure how that might have held up, so...
Oh, CFP.
I think, so with CM, well, CM, I think we pretty well went through that one, because everybody was crossing every T and F.
I think, first of all, Ted has done a real good job getting us to do that, and for a while we weren't. But what would happen when you're no longer here, in 35 years? Yes, how long are you here?
Can't leave him for that.
But then what, then what happens, the board changes and that goes away. How, how will we have that, that pattern?
Flag, so that if things change or anything else, so it's not buried.
I don't want more rules either.
It's more trap.
I think we should just make it a policy, the board should do it.
We could make it a policy, but also could attach it to bylaws. That might be the only way to do it.
I was gonna mention bylaws, but I think bylaws are more legally binding than policy, I think.
Yes.
If it were in the bylaws, we would have to do it. That's what the rules are.
It could be policies attached to the bylaws.
Backdoor.
I think if we just have a policy...
I could have a minister's policy. Adopt a policy that says that we're going to do it, as opposed to putting it into an ordinance?
And let's remember, this only comes up on that final review when all of the issues should have been resolved. It's a matter of reading it and taking a vote, instead of reading it, reading it, reading it, reading it, reading it, and taking a vote.
Well, it might be, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, it might be a situation we haven't encountered yet, but we will at some point, this board will encounter a project that just does not fit, or it does, has not done its homework. And we will need to go through each, we will need to justify why we denied an application, or we'll need to justify why we approved a controversial application. And we will have to, and what I would propose is I would write a policy that would be very similar to the same process that ZVA uses when they go through the four criteria evaluation for Avarius. So each one of those criteria, we would have a vote after, and we'd almost put it on the notice of decision, the checkbox. Yes, approve, disapprove, or deny. And, and what we would do is check it off as we go.
Majority vote.
Vote, vote, majority vote. And if any one of them fails, the project fails.
The project fails, that's right, because you have to meet every standard.
Exactly.
And we're fired, everyone. Can't not meet fire, we can't not meet some of the standards. When we get to the standards, I would encourage every board member to look at them and say, should we fail a project if they don't meet this? Because, I mean, you can put it into different verbiage in there. If it's in the standard, then they absolutely have to meet it, so...
If you put it, Section 8 has board procedures.
Board procedures.
That becomes your bylaws. So there's a Section 8 in the bylaws that has board procedures, touch of all, a quorum, majority vote, unanimous vote, and procedure, you might be able to throw something in there on that part, and it'll cover you right there.
But I think also... And we'll have to do it, John. We'll have to do it.
But I think it's good...
I think we shouldn't call it, anyway.
Right.
I hope that you should division wire, and the one, the person that gets turned down, give them a clear indication of why they've turned down.
And also, and one thing, one thing that I'm, and I'm sure here take you guys sometimes to, so I don't think I'm speaking out of school, but our planner does an awful lot of work with all of the people that are providing applications to us. And there's at times, there are those times when they, no, I'm not gonna do this, I'm gonna get a waiver, and say, well, the board's never going to approve that. Well, I think by looking at the very specific, this has to be 30 feet, it's only 25 feet, it's a standard. Boom, I mean, there, you know, it gives him a, I don't wanna say a little bit more power, but to have a little more confidence in us as a board, that we're going to follow each of our standards, and we're gonna have a complete review for each application. I think you guys are in agreement, we get, we had this.
We are.
All right, so, want to adopt it, so we want to make motion?
People know that it's not a seven out of 10. No.
No, no, it's gonna be a whole other thing.
Does it, does it require a motion?
No, single procedure.
Yeah.
The board unanimously says, why even move through?
I think we need to see the policy, or we need to see some...
Well, let's see a policy, and then we can vote on it.
We'll go all in favor of it.
All right. I will put it, what I'll do is I'll write a policy to go into the bylaws that specifies exactly how it shall be done, that each individual criteria, that each individual...
Standard.
Conditions of approval, condition for approval that is specified in Section 98H, for instance, is voted on individually. And, you know, frankly speaking, there are situations, I know this board has run into it before, especially when we've been asked, this board's been asked to compromise the standard, where you know that standard should not be compromised, but the project overall is great, and it's tough to vote against the whole project, you know, citing that my reason for voting against this is because this standard isn't met, even though you are absolutely justified to do this. This gives you a structure to do that, and also provides the town attorney with an excellent defense mechanism to be able to defend us if we're to be challenged with superior quality.
And again, it would also explain to the applicant, that's the standard, no way it's...
It's gonna give us cleaner apps.
Yeah, but this is as, this is as a final proof, by the time we get the final proof, they should know.
They should already...
They should have a good understanding of what we want to be in favor of. Oh, they should, but that doesn't mean they will.
It doesn't mean they're not gonna come and request other things, so, so again, when they're requesting for these waivers and the rest of this, you know, you go back to the standards.
Yeah, we can move forward.
I will prepare that for the next meeting, then we'll take our time off.
Moving on to downtown business districts, discussion of design, I thought we had pretty well...
Yes, we have, Sun Stands.
So we're moving into Sun, you got...
I have one other thing I wanted to bring up, very quickly. Ms. Kontoff, who is the other lady who is here? She basically expresses her regrets to the board, she has to leave. But she is the owner of Nothing New Antiques. For those of you who don't know that, that's one of, that's one of our...
Right down at the town line?
It's right at the town line, it's the antique store that actually is, it's a historic stage structure. So it's a historic building, has significance, because it's, it's the post-road, it's a post-road stage center. And so it's historic, it's the first structure, really, I think it's the first structure in Arundel, it's on the right. They've done a wonderful job from the second one, yeah.
Well, it's before the Arundel Town sign.
It's, yes, the Arundel Town sign is on the other side of the bridge, which is stunning, because that's where their board is. But she is very concerned, she, she wanted to come, we have had several discussions. She wanted to come and give you all a, explain to you what her concerns were with the BI district and her section. And one of her greatest concerns was that the current ordinances don't support a real entry statement into the town of Arundel from Bitterford. Our current zoning is industrial in that particular area. It mimics what's across the town line in Bitterford. And she feels that actually there are resources there that are worth protecting, and putting, putting some effort into creating what essentially would be a gateway district, a small gateway district coming into the town that would be a, that would control the type of uses, that would limit the kinds of uses that would go, that would, to uses that would be compatible with that, with what we're trying to project for an image in that area. Now, she's trying to project a very definite image. She's got historic structure, she's still the same antiques, they've done a beautiful job. She obviously would like to stabilize the property values of all the investments she's put in there. And frankly speaking, I've had other property owners approach me about maybe changing the zoning to make their property more attractive in that particular district, because right now it's, even though some of them have some great access to rails, they can't move their property, cannot move it at all. It's not desirable, it's not a desirable area, there is nothing that would, around it that would make their property appreciate in value. And frankly speaking, in a business district, I think this board is concerned, and I know the town is concerned, to make sure their property values appreciate where they can. So Ms. Kontoff was coming here to basically ask us to explore the possibility of creating a small gateway business district there that focused more on character and created an entry into the town of Arundel, instead of just keeping it industrial as it is now. And that would immediately morph back to the BI district. It's an intriguing thought. She certainly says I need help.
She's right up against Bitterford, though.
She's right up against Bitterford.
And she's on the other, yeah, she, she's on their side with the gas station, service station. There's not anything wrong with that, but, I mean, actually, even if you created a gateway, we'd have to be on the other side of it. Actually, she's, she's the really only business on Route 1 there in Arundel before you get past the bridge. She is a lone...
Lone wolf.
Yeah, no, I take that back, there is the property next door where there was a couple shops.
Yeah, but they don't have a business. They're out of business. They're out of business.
But I mean, right now, she's the only one surviving there.
She's like green building.
They have a green bridge.
The light porch comes out from the porch.
Right at the Rock.
Everybody's stuck in here, everybody.
Okay.
From Proctor Road in.
After you go over the...
You go over the bridge. She's on the left, Proctor Road's on the right.
Yeah, got it, okay, yep.
Well, we are talking all different directions here.
But there's still, there's still only two property, two, three properties on that side of the bridge, in the rundo.
On the other side, there are three properties, on the other side, there is, might be a few more properties that comes in.
And it continues on the other side, too. The point is, it does continue on the other side, it's the same scale as she is. The point is, if you're looking at scales of buildings there, I mean, you have the little church, you go over the railroad tracks, you've got that little church, I don't think that's a real operating church. It might be, they might have one or two people in the service, but I don't know.
It's another head of service, good tax game, I think.
But within the business, so she's in the BI district?
No, I can't remember that.
She's in the BI district. She's in BI?
Yeah, she's in BI, BI goes all the way to the... The problem is, BI serves you across the line.
I'm gonna have to go back to the regular, but did we not encourage smaller businesses up front?
No, right, right to the border.
It's a business industry.
21.
Yeah, and then we were gonna have the bigger complex in back.
But it didn't...
It's over the other end of town.
It didn't go up that far?
No, it only goes, it only goes a little bit past Camperon. So we, you've got another two miles before you hit her spot right there, you have to go Bonnie County Connection, you know, the greatest auto dealership there.
A lot of confident.
Mark.
A lot of stuff.
I think what we.
And also the, uh, the tattoo parlor in that subterfuge as well. That's, that's part of that smaller scale district that we're talking. Wouldn't be just her. It would be on both sides of the bridge that she was looking at. And, uh, she would like the board to contemplate such a thing, to go out and take a look.
I think this is something maybe economic development should look at and we should get some feedback because my question is, you know, to put down another zone or another set of regulations, is it worth it to the town? I mean, if a gateway and all of that character stuff is really going to be something that, that's going to be good for the town, then we should look at it. If it's just another zone, I'm not interested.
Yeah, I, 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 I'll tell you this, John. I, I was skeptical at first. I went out and took a, a long, hard look out there. And, um, I know.
Rowing is thin.
We can, it's, it's thin. The resources are thin, but there is still land there that, that could be, I think it's a lot of work, but can be dealt with. And certainly it would qualify if we were to designate it as some sort of gateway. First of all, there's always gateway grants, uh, that we can, we can get. We also probably can get the EDC to sponsor, whether it be public, private or, or private money is investing in and they're trying to dress up that area, whether it be some landscaping, moving the sign, creating some street trees or something that would create a real, an image there that would help enhance the, uh, the image there and then have, have a special zone there that allows buildings to crown up against the, uh, the, uh, the road there. Because quite frankly, you know, we, we have our, whatever. Is it seventy-five foot setback there? I think in that district? In that, in BI district, I believe it's seventy-five in that area. Somebody might be correct. Maybe it's just.
Seventy-five for those more than building that we want to allow.
Yeah, but.
But that's not, that, it's not.
Fifty-four inch.
It's still fifty.
Stagecoach didn't have a fifty-foot setback. She don't have.
It's right up against the road. She's right on. You look at the other buildings in there, the other buildings that you have in there, especially with, uh, where an old post road comes in there. We're talking posts. It stands lots of that, John.
So, so the.
The triangle piece.
The limitations there are the, are the setbacks. Is it the size of the?
It's the setbacks. It's, it's pretty much the setbacks and just establishing, hey, we've got a gateway zone here. We'd like this kind of business and, and maybe put some investment into it.
As part of, um, and I never got to read what the RFP went out for the study.
Yeah.
Is there a, I, I mean, they should be coming back with potentials. And I doubt that this was an area that specifically identified, but they're going to look at that whole business district, right?
Well, they're not gonna, no. Um, very honestly, uh, for the amount of money we've got allocated, they're not going to get very specific about individual areas, individual lots or individual areas. They're going to be looking at the town as a whole. Um, they're going to be talking about big picture. They're going to be looking at target industries, looking at businesses. They go look at, the information we provide it, the information we get, we, we provide them from our competing, the competing communities. And they're going to be looking at what businesses we have, uh, what kind of industries we should be targeting, given our resources. What kind of industries we could target if we have, um, if we modify our infrastructure or available infrastructure, what that cost benefit ratio is going to be. And then what kind of image we want to project. And it's going to be a general thing. It's not going to be very, very specific. Those will probably have to be modules that we do later on as, as things go on. You got some, some private money involved, make it private part, private, uh, public. But I think the intent is to give it, is to, to give us the general direction of where we're going. We're not going to get any specifics for twenty-five thousand dollars, John.
That was kind of my point though. If, you know, we don't have an image that we're targeting yet.
No.
So if we're going to talk about a gateway, we want a gateway that has, that projects that image. And so we kind of, you know, need to know what the image is first and then is that an appropriate location and can it be done to project the image we want?
Very good point, John. I would agree with it. The, the problem is we're probably not going to get this study till June. But I think it's something.
In my way.
And whether or not it would work is a market issue, you know, is, is a marketing, I mean, it's a good concept. Can it work there? Given it, given existing properties, the existing property values, the existing land use patterns that we have there and the demand for land in that particular area. I mean, I think as we've seen in the place where the, the tattoo parlors, I mean, that's, that's traded hands three, four times.
How many?
Four, I believe, three times.
Take off.
No, it's inside there. It's inside there. That's only in two and a half.
Well, are you, you saying traded hands or try, what you said in and out of there?
No, it's, it's traded, it's different businesses.
Yeah, different business.
There's been different businesses that have gone, I think there's been three, maybe four of them. But they can't succeed. They just can't succeed in that location. For a whole bunch of different reasons.
Is everybody here familiar with that area?
Mm-hmm. I want to go take a look.
Huh?
The board might want to go look at it.
Yeah, I agree. It's been, it could caught up with the B and I district, but it really doesn't belong with the rest of it.
Well, why not just take, take it and make it the northern side of, of the DB one district? And bring that district down to say, out of Southern Main Marine and say from there to the town line is DB one. We're looking at reclassifying and redeveloping the image on this end of town. We could do the same thing up on that end of town.
Very easily and apply it with.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's an excellent.
Good, do that.
That's an excellent. Yeah, I mean, at least it gives you a framework that can then be changed, no matter what, uh.
I just, I just seek more regulations.
But it's one less zone.
One less zone.
One less zone.
What made you go to this thing?
I think something like that could work pretty well because you'd have your DB one falls into Route One and then you've got the BI district in back of that. And what's the same way that you've got the DB two in back of DB one down in Southern.
You guys want to go into group up there and apple out there?
Honestly, I have no reason to go out there. I tried that unfortunately.
No, I'm very familiar with it.
Yeah, I am too.
Yeah, right down the street.
So, general consensus, uh, kind of considered, which is thought of, let's just do a quick look at it. How it might fit as a V one, V two kind of setup as we have at the southern end, do something similar in the framework we're up there. See if you think it fits and present it.
Uh, question to, uh, what would be helpful is to actually give us, uh, a land plot. Like a, that's section there because we know we have the railroad tracks, okay, on one side. Okay, and you basically have the swamp on the other side, okay? And.
You have Proctor, you, you're speaking of the Proctor Road area, right?
Yes. Well, I asked also too, where I'm speaking of, uh, where the trailer is and behind the trailer, it, it, you don't have that much depth or you have unusable land in between there. To see actually what we would have for depth wise, even though it says a thousand feet or whatever the depth might be, but actually unusable instead of unusable land. To give us.
Cause on the, on the other side of the tracks, on the north side, there's nothing either.
Where wood structures was gonna go.
No, they, well, that was up further, but closer to the tracks, there's nothing. That's all swamp.
North of the, north of the tracks or some, it's north of tracks and south of the tracks. Actually, it's a swamp.
Yeah, that's a very good suggestion, Mike. Can we get a?
I will give you a, uh, sites constraint, or it's actually, it would be a wages constraints map. They'll have wellens and shallow, the rock stores.
If we look at that similar to the southern part, if we trace that back, remember, I mean, it may allow for this stuff up front and like we do when, you can fill almost anything if you have the projects over. It'd just be back to show I think we can see that.
Would you like gateway on both ends of the town?
Sure.
Yeah.
Of course you want gateways in both ends.
How do you? Just as a.
As a designation, yeah.
That's where.
How many towns have that? Hmm? How many towns have that gateway on both ends of the town?
Well, what they do is they, um.
They got signed, but guess what?
There's not that many towns that Route One goes to the side.
We're lucky, we, we, we just got signs only a couple of years ago. You got Bedford, you got Saco, you, you know, now you keep going. You get, you got, uh, uh, Scottville. Yeah, but Dan. Both of those have gateways on both ends of town.
Scottville's been trying to get a gateway going for, what, thirty years.
Yeah.
But how many people didn't even know where Arundel is? Because, because they always thought we were either Kennybunk or we were Bedford.
But to be honest with you, I realize that on the Bedford side of the.
I thought that was Bedford.
I thought that was Bedford. I thought we crossed the railroad track. We were in Arundel.
Yeah, see, so that's what we, that's what we do with our sign.
Last night we responded to an accident down on one eleven.
We've got nothing.
And we had to lock one eleven. I'm directing some lady down New Road. I asked her where she wanted to go. She said Arundel. So I just looked at her and love to, you've made it. She was, yeah. Down, down past Holly setting up over the hill. She just had no idea she was in Arundel.
That's it.
You know, it's a good idea. It's just, you know, how much, you know, gateways on both ends of town. I mean, you, you said there ain't too many towns. Go all the way down the coast. You go into, that, that's the center of the town. Go all the way down the coast. Well, I think what we're, I think what we're seeing happening though, most of the communities are doing some very similar stuff. And move in where they hit their development faulting, a little bit inland now saying, God, we should have taken advantage of this and looking at. Very similar to what we're doing or we're doing a very similar to them. I think we're behind them a little bit.
I think we're ahead of them because they've, they've got massive, they've got huge parking lots to deal with.
Oh, well, see, no, for mine, I, by being behind them, meaning we have a better opportunity to do it. But, um, not first in, I, I think their plan, they've been trying to plan that for. But, um, again, the whole purpose, overthinking, planning, that's their purpose. But if we're going to get anything done on design, lighting standards, so we're gonna just take a quick look. Again, probably not the next meeting, but the one after or that northern end of Route One. We'll get some of the tubos and, uh, just look at it real quick and, and kind of judge that suitability, if it seems to fit with our other current. Um, but you wanted to go into some of the signage?
Yeah.
Was there any other comments on, on this particular, and we're all friends and bringing up there? Looked at.
Do you need new signs?
No, it's still the one.
Seven two five.
Yep.
Much section?
Seven two five.
We've, uh, we've already blown through the design standards, uh, and basically Roger and, and John, um, you, uh, you missed a rollicking meeting.
Really changed a lot of what was in there. Only one thing was excluded was metal buildings, I think, in the thing.
Yeah.
That were the larger.
I think so. If we go to our. We go to our October, it's our October eleventh rendition, if you remember.
For Fraschbach.
Well, that's, uh, revision four. We're going to move on, um, revision four over to, um, section seven two five, which is the signage section. There, Dan?
Yep. October eleventh.
He didn't know that first.
It hasn't. Signage hasn't changed. Okay, so it doesn't, if you don't have the.
It hasn't made a well.
October eleventh was the one where we did all the changes to the, uh, designs, the design standards. And now we're moving into seven two five. We need to take seven two five all the way back to Route version one because we haven't addressed it. Nothing's changed on it yet. Um, signage in, it's, and I must tell you, I think I'm a little overly aggressive in signage. And I think this is where we're going to have to spend a little bit of time thinking about what we want to achieve in signage. But the, the basic concept of signage in here is incentive based. It's minimums, minimum level of, of quality of signage. And I think when I say quality, I bring up that issue because it's been brought up too many times. Uh, it's been brought up to even my individual citizens. I believe the Economic Development Committee, uh, gave me a good lashing over, uh, a number of signs that have recently gone up and I had to inform them and I had no regulatory capability to do anything about the design or the quality of the signage that was going up. Um, they felt it was a distraction to the, the character of the town. Uh, and the town has in the past, as you know, I think a riot aid and a number of other instances where the town has fought for high quality signage. Well, we don't really have any standards for high quality signage. So again, keeping the same design issue. We're looking at going towards encouraging higher quality signage and the way we do that is by incentive based, um, zone. Which means that if you meet certain minimum standards in a higher quality sign, you can get more signage. Essentially, it's carrot methodology rather than stick methodology. And, and frankly speaking, seven point, seven two five is a carrot and stick, because you can't just have a carrot. You gotta have a stick somewhere. It's carrot and stick. Uh, stick in the sense that you can have a minimal amount of signage and carrot in the sense you can have more if you wanted to, but you have to have, the only way you can qualify for it is by having, uh, a higher quality of signage. What exactly that is, is something that we, we have to define. I have my ideas, but now we're in the sticky wicked stuff and it, it all depends on what this board, the business community, individual property will, uh, think about this. So, uh, to start off with, I call it, and I've used this term before, bonus signage, because bonus says it all right there. We call it incentive signage, but bonus seems to be a term that works. A, you get a bonus to do this kind of thing. It starts off with, uh, quite, quite frankly, some pretty, pretty hefty, pretty, pretty good designs. Well, let me, let me start. It, it starts off by talking about materials that, you know, you're going to use wood, metal, custom designed composite materials or fabric.
What is custom design? Materials custom design?
It's, a custom design is, is often a.
Vibram glass, plexiglass.
Well, it's, no, it's, 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 it would be a.
Very expensive.
A lot of different materials. It'd be a sandwiching of different materials.
Like, like an Arundel Ford sign, you know, pre made sign.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, expensive.
Yeah, they're expensive. Yeah. Composite materials would be.
I was wondering, I was looking at it as a material. Yeah. Custom design kind of says it's going to have to be custom made by a manufacturer, but it's not a material.
Yeah, I mean, we could take custom design out of there. I mean, composite says it too.
It's expensive. I think it is.
Composite is better.
Can we take that, I mean, just.
Let's go.
Read it.
Uh, unfinished engineered or composite construction materials such as plywood and OSB are expressly prohibited.
Why?
Cause people have wanted to kill me over some, some of the plywood signs that have gone up. Now, composite, what's interesting is composite signs like you'll get from a sign maker are actually a plastic material. They're carved. They're basically router it out. That's acceptable because it's got relief, it's got interest, it's got color to it and so forth. So it's not saying, oh, you only can have a carved Kennybunk wood sign. Saying, no, you can use different materials. But the objective is to, to add character to that signage.
Okay, I have one question.
Sure.
While we're starting out all this, are we actually going to come up to modern signs like other towns have? So that you can change a readable or readable sign, like a digital sign?
Well, we're, we're a little ahead of ourselves right now.
No, I mean, I mean, for so many years, signs has been such an issue. And the only thing is, a sign is the only thing that lights Route One. There you go.
We're going to get lights. I already remember we talked.
Well, turn out, they put such way back when. You got your light standards.
Let them go forward. We want to hear, hear more. Ted, I have, I have a question on plywood and OSB. Why is that included?
Well, uh, first of all, OSB is a lousy material for signs.
Come on.
It's a laminated material that de-lams in the water.
Well, but if it's painted or coated or whatever.
Yeah, especially if it's painted. Still de-lams. It should not be a next year. It should not be a material that's explosive or whatever. Plywood, usually, you know, John, I don't have a problem with, you know, plywood, the, the problem with plywood is, um, we've had signs that are just plywood and they're painted once and they just de-lam, they turn to crap and we have a real problem.
Well, I am.
Falling apart.
I understand what you're saying by like homemade plywood signs, but if you have a professional. But if you have a professional sign that happens to use plywood as a base, you're excluding that. I mean, there is plywood that doesn't de-laminate, and if it's professionally done with relief and everything else, what's wrong with plywood?
But it says unfinished.
It said unfinished.
Says unfinished, so like, here, unfinished engineered or composite is denied.
Unfinished engineered or composite.
Why not just say it's unfinished?
But unfinished is just one part of that.
Because it could have unfinished wood.
When, when I read this, it said unfinished, unfinished engineered or composite construction. Well, immediately above it said that we could have composite materials. And I was saying that unfinished engineered or composite construction materials are expressly prohibited.
Such as plywood and OSB. So unfinished plywood and OSB are expressly prohibited.
You want to even put hyphens in it? Because those adjectives are linked. You say unfinished engineered, which is plywood.
Okay, that's not the way I heard.
Okay.
I would have looked at it as...
Or composite construction. Unfinished, the, the key thing is unfinished engineered or composite construction materials. And maybe we should just say unfinished materials such as plywood and OSB.
Are expressly prohibited.
Are expressly...
That's what I would say.
Yeah, I agree.
And I think the issue there is unfinished, because as you know, I, I would, I would eliminate OSB. Anybody who makes a sign out of OSB is not serious. Because, you know, OSB, as I said, de-lams within five years.
Okay, we only have three to four minutes.
Okay. All right, let me, let me zoom through this. What we're trying to say is, okay, we're, we're gonna set a standard for signs, so we don't get the, the OSB signs, which we have in a few places. We're saying that we have lights, it will be eliminated by external light fixtures. We have neon sign, we have internally lighted signs. I don't know if you guys like neon, I mean, I couldn't...
I love it.
I love neon myself. The internally lit signs are no different than they are right now?
No.
Dark, dark, dark background, light letters?
No, you say lighted sign is one thing. But then when you, when you start going into the idea of, everything has to be dark backgrounds.
No, it doesn't say dark. It says internally lighted signs should consist of light hue lettering on a dark hue background. So the lettering's gotta be lighter than the background.
Is there a problem with that?
There's a lot of logos out there where they're blue on white or something like that.
I have, I have a sign I can't even put up, because it turns out in a dark background. I mean, what's the point of even?
Well, this is, here we go. This is... This is what you currently require.
Yeah, right.
And that's what I've been fighting with for the last fifteen years.
You're getting support over here, Marty, don't you?
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you.
I'm on your side on this one, Marty.
Thank you. I will argue a couple of things in here. One of the reasons why I, I would argue this is, A, I will tell you. First of all, it's more readable. And if you want me to give you Gibson's exact, definitely his exact studies on, on a, on how the eye reacts to light background versus dark background, I'll get those for you, because that's, that's...
Yeah, but that's on a lit road.
No, Marty, it's, 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 it's in any environment. Lighter letters against a dark background are much more weird. That's number one, without question. Now, you're right about logos.
I, I, and I do agree with you that the dark background lighter letters are more readable, because it has to do with diffusion of light.
But if, but if a business owner, so what if they sign, I mean, if it wasn't readable?
It's their problem.
That's his problem. The second, I mean, what causes a problem for us?
Light pollution?
It's to you.
People slowing down trying to read.
Light pollution.
That's, that's the issue. That's why you folks did it, was the concern about cumulatively, what all these do in terms of light pollution. All the albedo, albedo, excuse me, that, that is generated from all this light when you have a multitude of signs. That's why.
That's when you have a multiple of signs. You show me where there's a multiple of signs, because you're driving down a goddamn dark hole.
Okay.
Well, I think what we're trying to do here, Marty, is we are anticipating being highly successful in the future where we will have a multitude of signs. That's, that's our target. That's our job. It's the planning board, isn't it? To just push for that? That's what our goal is. That's, we want our business community that successful, that we have a multitude of signs. So, we're taking that into account and trying to anticipate that kind of success. And ensure that when we have so many signs, if they're all that light or dark on light, that we're gonna have a lot of excess light that's actually going to make it difficult to say, to read those signs. And I, I think, I think that's been proven over and over again. If you see a lot of, and I don't disagree with them, there are logos which have light. But those logos still can be within a darker field and still work. I think, do you remember, guys, remember Arco? That company had a light logo. It was a white, white flame with a red flame inside of it. But they put it inside of a blue field. They had a white rim around it, and it was inside of a blue field, specifically so that you could, you would focus in on that logo, and it wouldn't be lost in this field of light. That's, that's why they did it. It was, it was, it was an excellent design. The intent is not to eliminate people's logos. The intent is to reduce the amount of additional light that's generated, so you can read all the other signs.
Why not, why not just make it simple then and say, "You're permitted to produce this much light at this distance from your sign." You know, so many, so many put candles or whatever unit you want. So at a distance of whatever is fifty feet, ten feet, you may produce no more than this much light. You do it any way you want.
I, I would agree with that, John, except there's no way I, I have the tools to measure that. I mean, honestly, I really, I really don't have those tools. I mean, one, one of the biggest problems is I, I love performance standards and saying, "Hey, do it any way you want." Just meet this minimum standard.
Do we not have a statement that says that the light can't go past the property line?
That's only for illumination. Direct illumination for parking areas.
For light. What is the difference with light from a sign or a light from parking?
Because light from a sign will probably go onto the street.
No, we had that problem. When you have a setback, good, where streets are dark.
The object is not to create no light, it's to, is to reduce excess light. To reduce the light that, that makes your, that affects your eye, such that you cannot see.
Depending on how high you are.
Well, it's, it's, yeah, actually, in some cases, it's better to be lower. In other cases, it's better to be higher.
Yeah, that's another strong problem.
You know, to John's point though, I mean, they sell meters that photographers use all the time. And they're pretty cheap.
Any, any smartphone will do it for you at this point. I mean, you know, it wouldn't stand up in court, but you'd get pretty darn close, so you'd know.
You'd get out there in the middle of the night.
You could get a photometer.
No, it doesn't have to be the middle of the night.
Spend enough time in a left truck. Jerry, pick up. Are you trying to get Obama phones?
It could be done in daytime.
Yeah, but if you can get him to do it.
Or he can eat it.
All right. Okay, Tom, we're going on, we're going on nine o'clock. The board had made a motion that kind of be done by this time. What I would, what I would encourage, I had several questions.
Sure.
Kind of going through this, but let's, let's move. Can we get, can we, yeah, we're gonna start right back here on this issue. Can we, can we get a little bit more data, so that we're, we're all comfortable with this?
Do you want me to get pictures?
Anything, if, if it's easy for you.
Yeah, it is.
Because the easier it is for us, the easier it is for them.
Pictures for last time.
Oh, yeah.
Did that really help?
Oh, yeah. I think that's the only reason we moved, got so much done on it.
All right, I will see what I can put together.
Good job. And let's try to, in every concern that we have, let's get that out and maybe even send them to Ted earlier.
Well, when you're, when you're doing that, why don't we take, drive down Route One and try to show how much light there is there?
No, we've all been down there, Marty. We, we agree with you. What I might, what I might suggest is also maybe go over to other towns that have a lot of those kind of lighting, of those kind of signs. You'll find it in Bitterford, you'll find it in, in Cannibal. You don't have to go far.
Do we have specific examples?
Route One?
No, but I mean...
Establishes.
Yeah, where we could go and see it?
I think you have to just go over the bridge on Route One, into, into...
I guess my point is...
You got the Shell station there, you got...
I guess my point is, I drive up and down this coast in part of Maine all the time. I can't think of any sign that ever really bothered me.
Right.
I mean, there are signs I can't read, and I think, boy, that business guy ain't got any sense. We've got a lot of them right down Route One. I mean, they have this beautiful sign in little teeny, little teeny letters. And unless you stop and redesign, there's no way people are saying what's in those business. But, I mean, that's a business decision, isn't it?
And they're going for a certain clientele. Usually, their clientele isn't gonna come and sit in at night, so that's why they don't care as much about it. It reads better during the day than it does at night.
What about LED signs?
Yeah, well, that's, that's something that we, we aren't even into that at section. That's later on. But yeah, we don't have anything on LED signs yet. I think it's something that we're gonna have to grapple with.
To a wise point, really. I mean, that's kind of the newer way.
Oh, it is.
LED signs coming up all over the place.
Aren't LED just internal lighting?
Well, well, yes, but I mean, there's...
Every LED is a...
Digital circuits.
No, they don't necessarily move.
No, but, but they can. Yeah, they can. You have digital, you have...
That was an issue with angles, where it was flashing too much and distracting drivers, and they said, "No, I shouldn't do that."
You know, there's a certain, there's a certain rhythm or a certain timing on how it should be. So it isn't distracting. And also, you can all...
I would say... All very good points, but...
What I would ask is that, Mr. Chairman, is that members bring, why don't you go out with your cell phones or your digital, digital cameras and take a couple of pictures yourself. Everybody bring in some pictures of some examples of good and bad signs.
Oh, you can take, you can take a bad sign of mine. Looks like shit.
Go ahead, you said it.
And which one is that?
Okay. Planners report?
Planners report, uh, yes.
You asked for it.
No, I said it. All right, what do I have? I have a number of, things are starting to come together a little bit more. Although the applications that I warned you would be deluging us in November still have not materialized. Still waiting. I have, in terms of the report of activity, the Staff Review Committee met today and approved two projects. One was SL Tech down in Portland Road, where they were putting in a, in the rear. They're putting in a portable storage unit. Basically a metal storage unit. They're still gonna be keeping cars and parts in here. It's a seven by, it's an eight by forty unit. They have a good base. It's shielded from the adjacent properties and it's a good cleaning area. And so they're gonna be expanding that. They're looking at doing more shipping for their type of business that they do. The second one is another auto repair facility called Integrity Auto. They come out of Buxton. They have moved over into twenty Enterprise Drive. For those of you who don't know, Enterprise Drive has its number. That would be the old foundation, well, it's not old, it's, it's the, the operation that...
The old foundation.
That Norm Vinette had.
Behind Pullins?
Yep. It's the one that's directly behind Mark Pullins. And it's on the right, first one on the right, after Mark Pullins. They are, they're coming from Bitterford, uh, excuse me, Buxton, as I said. They're gonna be basically doing a normal auto repair. They are gonna start off with one lift and eventually go into three lifts. Those are the things there. They were approved. Nice building. So we have two new businesses, or SL Tech's been here for a while, Integrity Auto's new business has come here. What else do we have? We have a, I have two, bless you. I have two pending, possibly three. Applications that'll be coming before the Staff Review Committee for exercising the public, or excuse me, the private way exemption clause that you, that we passed back in June. These are the first ones who are doing it. They're on existing private ways, obviously. One is, of course, the, the one that started it all over Bittersweet. They don't have all the stuff together yet. The others were the ones that the board may remember, we had, we appeared before the ZDA and we upheld our interpretation of the law. One of those is, they're preparing their materials. They will, in all likelihood, qualify. All of these have qualified. I've had a couple that have come in that have been very interesting, because they're on very, very unique situations where there's like a house that's like a mile out on this dirt road. So it qualifies, but the lots are not existing as a... And so they were trying to get in Jewish subdivision best on that, but we had to deny them on that. And we've had some inquiries on Curtis Road, by the way. So I haven't gotten anything back from them. So we are going, we're getting bits of the private exemptions that we were talking about. And people are gonna take advantage of that. And I would expect that we'll be reporting to one of those probably in December. Other activities, you're probably interested in, you understand, we've been at this campground. As the chairman knows, the chairman accompanied the code enforcement officer and myself out to take a look at the proposed heights of the fencing. That was, that was a proposal we discussed back in, what, June, July, July of last year? This past summer, I should say. And we spent a good couple of hours out there. Came to a conclusion that some of the fence could be dropped, but it had to be extended to, because there wasn't enough coverage in certain areas. I have talked to Warren in the interim, and he wanted to defer putting in that four foot fence until spring, and we informed him that, reminded him, he's actually in violation right now. And it's, let's deal with the violation. It's not just that he's holding up his application, but that in fact he's in violation. We need that violation corrected. And I talked to Rick Lake today, and he is, they're going to proceed. So I would expect that probably the first meeting in November, or the second meeting in November, they'll be asking for their final approval once they get their fence up and Jim can go out and field verify that in fact all the standards of the 2006 approval have been met. The, well, this campground has in fact received their site location and their NRPA permits. So I have those in hand. So, once they take care of this violation and get that fence up, and Jim verifies that it's, they have complied with all the standards you folks imposed in 2006, we'll take care of them. We'll bring it to you for you. I have several other issues that are developing, enforcement issues that are developing right now. We're also taking a look at, at what the, the impacts are going to be of the new road and the old Alfred Road realignment that DOT is proposing to do. It's gonna have some impact on some properties there. I believe Slidgway have looked at that.
Yeah.
Well, you will be, because they're going to have to start looking into their domain takings and they have to do their...
They haven't talked about it.
Appraisals. Well, I'm not, I, I have a feeling since it slipped off the list, that turning lane down to Drew's Mills Road, looks like that's on, on the hot seat. But this intersection, which was one of the reasons why they were doing that turning lane, is, is not in the, it's not on the list for this, this fiscal year, so we're behind. They couldn't do it this year, because they haven't done all their, their preliminaries yet, so. But we're, we're investigating that, and that has an impact on existing business out there. And we're doing some negotiating with that business owner to move some of his, his equipment back onto his property and into a better location. So we've got a number of things going on, also in the process of notifying all those outstanding road construction projects that they need to do the final inspection for the snow flies, but not for the winter. I've also gone for an inspection over a Kelly Connection. The boys from Carbo, as you recall, the used car dealership down in the old RV place. They're a little behind in their site work, but they, they went through their building CEO inspection. That looks pretty good. I met with Craig on the site, with the chairman, and discussed, it's a little behind in the site work and set out a schedule of work that we needed done before a CEO could be executed.
They started the ball.
Yeah, I know. They called me about the curving, and I did talk to Dayton Sand and Grau to ensure that they were scheduled to at least take care of the curving. Dana Robinson told me that they're going out there, I guess, in another two weeks to do that curving. So, one of the reasons why they can't get that... Um, so, one of the reasons why they can't get that finished coat, they've got their base coat down, can't get the, the wear and service, is because Dayton Sand and Gravel books out to, to close the, the plants, and they're not gonna do it.
Where's that scheduled?
Uh, that's usually scheduled Thanksgiving, week of Thanksgiving.
Loaded down your...
So, um, and so I have, I have three, three reports I need to get from, to look off on, on the status of, of those, one of which is, um, Shady Oaks, as you know, that, that the adult, the, uh, clear is hard there, that's pretty much done, but we need a final inspection on that. They're, they're coming in for pulling two permits, which they're allowed to by the terms of the, your permit that you bring up today, but maybe they need to just finish it before we go. And that is my report.
Thank you, like opening up for any other public comment, anybody here any specific questions?
Just a question to the chair. Do you hear anything about Kate's butter? Kate's butter, um... Yes, uh, I guess so. I've heard that Chris Patri has been playing phone tag with Jim to discuss with the schedule of review setting the roof. Uh, it is my understanding, and this is not confirmed, but it's my understanding to the CEO that they have a new contract for the, for the building construction, and Jim's still waiting for...
So, the roof failed?
Uh, the roof never, uh, the purveyors of the certifying company, our controls would not, would not accept the roof, they would not certify the roof, and they actually said that months ago, and so nobody else has picked up that, and I believe that, as I said, there's a new con, there's a new building con. Is there a general on the side? That the former construction outfit, it's my understanding, I could be wrong, but it's my understanding, they're no longer going to continue building that building, there's gonna be a new general on that side. So, when this starts, I don't know, because very honestly, I saw when I was driving up there, a group of people standing, uh, doing some reviewing of the, the building, and I was just asking why I didn't stop and see if they were, maybe they're looking for copper. But, uh, there isn't, but, uh, there is a, we're very hopeful that they're going to get going, I know, I know the Patriots are very, very anxious to get into the building.
Yeah, we want them here.
Of course we want them, we do want them, and frankly speaking, oh Lord, she wants them gone, so, um, we, we really wanna welcome them into town, and, uh, sure, the Economic Development Committee and the Select and the Planning Board will, will wanna do a big poof while they finally get in there and have some press, and make sure we get that out in the press, and welcome the town, and just hope that they can, all these, all these difficulties can be resolved as quick as possible, because the snow's gonna fall.
Weather rain's gonna fall. There being no public comment, anybody for...
Would you, second?
Is a motion to resign the second, any further discussion? Call it then?
Yeah.